Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, May 24th. First on this evening's agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes of May 10th, 2021. We will be looking for a motion.
A motion?
So moved, and we'll be looking for a second.
In a second.
And we have a second. We have motion by Mrs. Maroni, and we have a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing under communications and seeing nothing under audience, we will proceed to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cron, turning it over to you.
Thank you very much. Just a very brief update on our, as everyone knows, we had a ransomware attack. It took place on Monday. I would like to thank local law enforcement. I'd like to thank Homeland Security and our new friends. I think the Coast Guard is somehow involved too. We've involved all the branches with this. But I would like to thank law enforcement for their work, and I'd like to thank Tim Wells and our staff for their work. The work continues. It's an active criminal investigation, so that's all that I'll say about it at this time. But I again just want to say thank you to all the people that are working so hard at getting us back on track at this point. Next, I would like to just give out a few important dates for the summer, maybe some save the date moments. For special education summer school, our special education summer school will run from July 12th through August 12th. Our high school students and students attending our substantially separate programs will attend four days a week, Monday through Thursday, from 7:30 to 11:30 a.m. Preschool and our social, emotional, and elementary programs students will attend three days a week from 8:30 to 12:30. And there will be scheduled walk-in services for students receiving ELA and math tutorials. So that's our special education summer school. Our other summer program that we're running this summer is going to run for three weeks at the elementary and middle school. July 26th through 29th is the first week. The second week is August 2nd through 5th. Then the third week will be August 9th through 12th. And we'd ask folks to save the date. Very excited about those programs, and the flyers have all come out and are starting to be distributed. So I hope everyone has seen them, and we'll make sure they're on our website. And we're very excited about the themed weeks at the middle school and elementary school. And finally, an MCAS update. Grade three ELA MCAS was postponed last Monday and again today due to connectivity issues related to the ransomware attack. All other elementary MCAS tests have been completed. Parents were obviously notified, and Tim Wells is working with Pearson, the MCAS liaison between DESI and the Rockland Public Schools Student and Teacher Login Network to resolve issues. Tim is also working on getting our systems, our network system, back up and running to make sure that we don't have any issues with preventing, on our end, with preventing MCAS from getting through to our system. The middle school is scheduled to take their MCAS exams this week, Wednesday and Thursday, and if there is a problem with connectivity, we'll be notifying parents that tomorrow. Colleen Forlizzi, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, has been in contact with DESI, and we'll have paper-based test ordered as backup. The deadline for test-taking is June 11th. We prefer to do it all online, but we will use the paper tests if we absolutely need to. And that is all I have for superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cron.
You're very welcome.
Just a quick comment on the cyber attack, the ransomware, in a year that we thought we have seen every challenge under the sun that could possibly have been thrown on us. Here we are, receiving a cyber attack, and I just wanted to comment on, as wouldn't expect anything less, the resiliency, flexibility, and stick-to-it-iveness of administration, staff, teachers, and students. You know, for this to happen when it happened during MCAS week, it's about as difficult at the time it could have happened. But just having seen everybody react in the way that they did, no surprise here, but we reacted very, very well. Thank you to everybody for that. Any questions or comments from any of my colleagues on the committee about the superintendent's report?
None.
Seeing nothing, we'll move on to item five, which is reports. We will be looking for approval of five financial reports for the school department, the high school student activities, Rogers Middle School student activities, daycare, and cafe. We will be entertaining five motions.
Five motions?
We have five motions by Mrs. Maroni.
In five seconds.
And we have five seconds by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is monthly reports for March and April. We will be looking for 15 motions for monthly reports for April, and I will take a big, deep breath. First for art, second athletic, computer technology, dean, English 9 to 12, foreign language, health and physical education, library, math 9 to 12, middle school, two middle school items, one for Mrs. Shipper and one for Mr. Griffin, music, radio, TV station, science, and social studies. So we'll be entertaining 15 motions.
Fifteen motions, fifteen seconds.
We have 15 motions by Mrs. Maroni and 15 seconds by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much. Under old business, we have a request for approval for the 2021-2022 Rockland, excuse me, Rogers Middle School Student Handbook, and this is the second reading. Are there any questions or concerns from the committee regarding the handbook?
No.
No.
Okay. We'll be entertaining a motion for its approval.
Motion for approval, second.
We have a motion for approval by Mrs. Maroni and a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is a vote. Next, under new business, we have a mental health update by Freya Leahy, Rockland Public Schools Adjustment Counselor, Department Head. Welcome.
Hi, Grandma.
Sure, yes, please.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just a brief update. I'm sure I could be here for days talking about this year, as we all could. Starting on a positive note, as a team, the adjustment counselors have been impressed with students' resiliency and ability to adapt to change. This will serve them well, given the inevitable changes life will present them with. Building resiliency is the caveat to what follows. In comparing the adjustment counseling statistics in several categories from this academic year to other years, the numbers surprisingly look about the same. For example, the number of reports of abuse or neglect made to the Department of Children and Families is on track to be about the same as it was in 2019 and 2020. While the number of outpatient counseling referrals and referrals for crisis assessments are down, we anticipate that this is a result of not having full access to students for a variety of reasons. The one number that has doubled from last year is the number of Handle With Care notifications that we have sent. Handle With Care, which is part of trauma-sensitive schools, is sent to pertinent staff when something significant has happened in a student's life. Examples of this may be police activity at a child's home, a child becomes homeless or goes into foster care, or hospitalization. The goal in sending a Handle With Care is to proactively provide the information to prevent behavior escalation in the classroom. Unfortunately, the increase in Handle With Cares indicates that students are experiencing lots of turmoil, which is not a surprise. Since the return to full in-person learning, which has increased class sizes, the elementary and middle school levels are seeing an increase in peer conflict escalation in classroom behaviors and lower frustration tolerance. Across all levels, we're seeing an increase in work avoidance, a decrease in motivation, and increased symptoms of anxiety and depression. We have had many more requests for assistance in securing resources, including internet, food, and mental health support. That being said, we are seeing more students connected with outpatient mental health providers, which is good, because when we are making referrals, we are finding that most providers have a three to 12-month waitlist. As a result, we are checking in more frequently with students who do not have access to outside counselors. While we have worked to stay connected to our approximately 223 remote students district-wide, we anticipate seeing an increase in school refusal and social, emotional needs come September. That being said, we know that Rockland will come together, as always, to continue to support our students, families, and staff as we welcome a sense of normalcy back into our schools and lives.
Thank you.
Any questions I can answer for any of you?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Ms. Leahy. For being here today with us on for this super-important topic. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I want to point out, Dr. Small asked for this to be on this evening's agenda because she was concerned about the mental health of our students, but I know also as well as our faculty, as well as I know it's been on, this has all been very hard on everybody. So thanks for being here with us, and thanks for all you continue to do. Questions or comments from the committee?
I also just, I wanted to thank you for your whole team, for the work that you do. It's really important work, and I think probably under-recognize on a daily basis from many families whose children don't access your services. So I just want to thank you for everything that your team does. It's so important. And I guess maybe for the community that's listening, if they have students, if they have needs, how do they get in touch with your team?
Every school has their own adjustment counselor. They can call the secretaries. The secretaries can put them in contact with the school adjustment counselor, and all of us are more than willing to talk to any parent, any student, at any time.
Thank you. And I just want to make a comment too, that I think we talked about May being Mental Health Awareness Month, and part of it is normalizing the conversations around mental health. And so that's why I thought that having you present today was so important, so that we can start to normalize that conversation and have mental health be part of what we talk about when we talk about health in general.
Right. One definitely a positive of the pandemic is that it's out there. I mean, everyone's facing it, and everyone is talking about it. So I think maybe one positive that comes out of this is that people feel less stigmatized to have the discussion.
Fortunately, we haven't had too many incidents in recent history that we've all sort of been in a recent crisis boat together. And I know we are all in this together, and it's been hard on all of us. So I think that you're right. Hopefully, one bright spot out of this whole experience for all of us will be the de-stigmatization of mental health. And it's not something that we should say at meetings. It's something we should recognize in ourselves, in our own homes, in our own kids, in our own staffs, in our own workplaces. And it's, the time has never been more important for that discussion. Any other comments and questions?
Just a quick question. Are you seeing a disparity or discretion between the number of incidents either at the elementary school, at the high school? Is there more of a significant population that is seeing not this?
So the middle, I feel like the middle school is hit the hardest. It's the largest number of students we have together in one building. And middle school is just brutal as we know, never mind throw in a pandemic and coming back together, having not been together all year. I think the middle school population and the staff within that building are the ones that are seeing the biggest unraveling, I would say, unfortunately. But they have a great team, and they're literally doing the best every day to pick each and every kid up when they fall. So, thank you. Welcome.
Hey, forget how hard it is just to be a middle schooler and a normal year.
Oh, my gosh.
Right?
Yes. I don't forget.
That the middle school is the hardest school in the district, just because the kids are just so trying to find their own way to begin with, and now add in a pandemic. And parents are trying to parent the best way they can and support them. And, you know, parents in this time also not doing so well.
It's definitely hard to tell what's normal behavior, because we're not in our normal. We don't even know what normal is. So it's definitely challenging for that population in particular.
And I think they're old enough to be aware that something is going wrong or different, but not old enough to sort of all handle everything too. I know it just in my own house with a middle schooler and a high schooler, it's, you've created this fear, wear your mask, wear your mask. Now we're outside. I'm like, you don't, we're in the backyard. You don't need your mask, you know? But that's what they've been taught for a year, to stay protected. So, thank you Freya, for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, under new business, we have the Rockland High School Improvement Plan and School Council. Dr. Cron.
Turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Welcome, Dr. Harrison.
Hey, everybody.
How are you?
Great.
Great.
Big week for you, a big couple of weeks coming up?
Yeah, we are very much looking forward to it. Should be a lot of fun for everybody. Well, tonight I'm here to present the school improvement plan for Rockland High School for next year, the 2021-2022 school year. I believe everybody has it in front of them, and it's a lengthy document, so I thought I would just summarize it today. And if anybody has questions, I'm happy to elaborate on anything. I'd just like to start by thanking the department heads and the teachers for contributing, as well as the site council, and the superintendent's office for their support, as well as a collaborative effort to develop this plan. This is kind of our post-pandemic school improvement plan, which is exciting to think about life after the last 15 months. So it ties in a lot of, I think, our most critical needs at this point. It also brings together some of the things we were working on pre-pandemic. So I think it's a very comprehensive document, and I think it's going to be a great plan for school improvement. So the first theme you'll see our teachers focusing on next year with our students is culturally relevant teaching, which is making students, particularly of color, feel supported by connecting curriculum to students' ethnic and racial backgrounds. And we thought we would do this through partnering with different disciplines within our curriculum. The art, science, and English departments in particular have targeted this as an important need, as well as our librarian, who wants to bring in more resources into our library. And then, as a school improvement goal, we really want to try to address closing some of our achievement gaps. And that is broader in the sense that it could be socioeconomics, it could be minority gaps, all different types of gaps we want to connect, reduce, whether it's MCAS, computer-based testing results, attendance results. We want to try to narrow those achievement gaps. And I think it goes hand in hand between making every student feel connected and valued, which we want to make sure our curriculum reflects that. And then computer-based testing would probably be our second big theme. This is only the second year the high school has done computer-based testing for English and math. So English really wants to try to target improving student grammar skills through grammar guides. So they wanted to stream their curriculum from ninth grade to 12th grade and really focus in on those skills that students need for their writing and understanding reading. For math, they wanted to do, they've noticed that the calculator skills are not as strong. So with computer-based testing, they wanted to fine-tune some of those calculator skills, as well as both departments, English and math, they only have one year's worth of evidence of a practice exam, of a real exam. So now that they want to use those questions to integrate into their curriculum, and they can model new questions after those templates. And then science will be next year having their first year of computer-based MCAS testing. They were supposed to have for biology, computer-based this spring, but they switched it to the paper-based. So we'll do paper-based this year, and then the new MCAS next year for science. So we have a lot of things going with MCAS. The third key theme that I'm seeing from our staff is adopting a social, emotional learning tool across, I hope, the district. But at the high school, we'd like to really use this tool to identify strengths and weaknesses that will inform the areas in which we need to grow within the social, emotional health curriculum, which is provided by the DESI. The fourth theme I'm seeing is one-to-one technology. Our teachers did a great job thrown in, and our students did too, getting a Chromebook and having to learn as they go. In a pre-pandemic world, we would have provided a year's worth of professional development to our teachers before we even launched this. So I would really like to go back and try to find out what are the skills our staff need the most to effectively use technology within our school. There's a good way to do it, and there's a bad way to do it. So I want to make sure that we're finding the perfect balance between using it as a resource and not just the end-all as part of your instruction. So one-to-one technology would be a fourth theme. And then, I think to kind of wrap up, interventions is something we really were trying to do pre-pandemic for our students who are struggling. So in particular, we want to relook at our student support team and how we identify students who may be at risk and need academic or social, emotional support. Part of that is going to be bringing our teachers to the table more to be a part of those conversations, because at the high school, a student may have six different teachers. So we tend to not include them in all the conversations, because there's six different teachers. So we want to do a better job of having more personal conversations with staff versus sending out, right now we send out a form, they write back, they give us information. But we want to increase our face-to-face, in-person conversations with our staff to really understand what the students' needs are and the accommodations that they may or may not need. We also want to, and we started this before the pandemic, is MCAS tutoring support, which is, I consider, a tier-two intervention during the school day, where we have the kids in their study hall receive some extra support, basically targeting them from their grade eight performances, hoping that they'll pass the first time around versus having to be put into remediation in our curriculum. And then we also are very excited about the EL tutoring position we started this year. We're hoping to have the EL tutor be a part of some of our co-teaching classes, our co-taught classes, so that if a student's in biology and they're learning English while they're learning biology and have to take the MCAS in biology all in their first year in the United States, which is a very challenging task, having an EL tutor in that biology classroom is going to help support them, because then the EL tutor can see them later in the day in academic support and provide a lot more assistance. We started this year and want to continue it next year of strengthening our Saturday School program and our after-school support program. Our Saturday School program is 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and our after-school support program is Monday through Thursday, 3:00 to 4:15 p.m. What we tried to do this year is create more direct communication with families. So we did a Google Mail merge, so families got a personalized letter that said Dear, and it had the students' names, so the parents could, and it had information embedded about what subject they needed help on, the time that they needed to report to, and then they had the student, parents RSVP. So we kind of created a do-now for the parents so that they were a part of the process. And then with Saturday School, we also then sent text reminders using Google Voice, and we said, like a dentist office, press C to confirm. So we found that we were getting more parent involvement that way, and I think it helped the students. And I think to wrap up our last theme is career readiness. One of the things we started this year was to incorporate civics projects into our curriculum, so every high school student will create a civic, will work in a collaborative civics project by the time they graduate. So that'll be junior year in the United States History II class. Mr. McAllister and his department have done a great job of kind of developing this as part of their curriculum. So for example, some of the popular projects this year, they just finished them, was food waste. They wanted to tackle, so if a kid goes into the cafeteria, they get their lunch, and this year, more than ever, where things are wrapped, individually wrapped in packages, and then they throw them in the trash. So what can we do about food waste was a big topic. Another topic this year that they came up with was Mr. Rockland and Ms. Rockland, how Mr. Rockland gets a scholarship, but Ms. Rockland doesn't, and how do we make those two events more equitable? So they came up with a fundraiser, because Mr. Rockland has a fundraiser. So we wanted to, they wanted to develop a fundraiser for Ms. Rockland. So those are just two examples of some civics projects. That's kind of a summary. There's obviously a lot more in the document, but I'm happy to take questions. But thank you for your time.
Questions, comments for Dr. Harrison?
I have a question. So I love the focus on diversity and inclusion, and I want to know if you plan to have like a target group of students that are diverse, sort of advising on what their needs are?
Yep. So we have a group already in the school. It's the fourth year, next year will be the fourth, it's called Daring Discussions. So this is a group, we have two advisors to Daring Discussions. So they come to our high school-based Equity and Inclusion Committee. They're our representatives for our high school Equity and Inclusion Meeting, which meets once a month. So they're a great voice. They spearheaded a nice mural project along cafeteria, if you come to the, I know you guys probably haven't been to the school, but along the cafeteria is a nice mural project, which we basically celebrate each month. So we had Pride Month, I think last month, or June is actually Pride Month, but we did it earlier. We did Black History Month in February, Women's History Month in March. We had different themes each month. So they, that was initiative that they spearheaded.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
Is your student, about your school improvement plan set up the same way as the elementary and the middle school? Do you have a committee that comes like quarterly with parents and teachers? How do you do this in this high school? Is it the same?
Same way. We have a site council, just as the elementary school. So this plan is developed from our staff, and then we bring it to the site council, which is with students, faculty, myself, and parents. And we put it together, and they vote, and then it comes to you guys.
Okay. I wondered, for the five people out watching us, that they might want to know how all of this is getting put together in the real world. Thank you.
Actually, ratings were up. I think it was seven last week.
Oh, it was seven? Wow, we're famous.
Anything else for Dr. Harrison?
That's all I have. Thanks for your hard work, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
All right.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, we have our Esten, Jefferson, and Memorial Park School Improvement Plan. And I know we have Ms. Sheehan, Shifely, and Ms. Smith here with us. Welcome.
Dan, do we have to vote on the school?
That was all draining, not me.
Good evening. The three of us are, have the same school improvement plan. Basically, we work together on it. And some differences, little individual differences, but together we are going to present it. I'm Michelle Shifely, the principal of Jefferson. And we have Janice Sheehan, the principal of Memorial Park School, who will be talking about instructional practice. And Marilyn Smith, principal of Esten School, who will be talking about communication and resources. Today, Rob, I'm going to be sharing about student learning. And our big focus, you'll see a lot in our school improvement plan, you'll see a big shift. We're really focusing on structured literacy, that being explicit instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, fluency, and comprehension, also looking at text structure. We are, right now, have foundations as our phonics program. Haggerty is our phonemic awareness program, K to 2. And we are also introducing keys to beginning reading to all of our teachers next year and the year after. And Ms. Sheehan will, will explain a little bit more about that. But really focusing on our K to 2 population. Our K to 4 teachers will be trained, however, because of the pandemic, we want to make sure everyone has the basic skills in literacy. In math, we're adopting Bridges Math Program, the Bridges Math Program, K to 4. Our teachers will be trained as well, and we will introduce it starting in September. Science will have blocks dedicated to K to 4 science, and we're reviewing the scope and sequence. But we will have blocks in our academic schedule dedicated for science, which is very important. As far as assessment, we'll continue with I-Ready in K to 4, DIBELS. We have an early diagnostic that we're looking at for kindergarten as well, to really hone in on those kids that need that extra help, and also to screen for dyslexia. Math, we'll continue with I-Ready, and we'll have Bridges Math Common Assessment as well. In science, it will be more affirmative assessment this year, just because we're slowly introducing that block, K to 4. Our social, emotional curriculum, really, we are continuing with PBIS and responsive classroom, really bringing it in. We've continued it throughout the pandemic, really came back to school in April, really giving teachers time for that responsive classroom, which was, is really important to build both community and also to build social, emotional skills. We are also working on our tier-two structure. We have weekly meetings in all three elementary schools with our behavioral and social, emotional support team to target students that may be coming up to the nurse, or maybe have behavior referrals, and to make sure that those kids are being tracked and seen, and we're not forgetting them. And as far as tech is concerned, we will continue our STEAM classes weekly, and also continue to work together to sustain the one-on-one digital, you know, our one-on-one devices to make sure our students continue to grow in their skills. It's amazing to see kindergarten students using the computer. It's amazing.
Better than us, right?
I know. They can solve a tech problem quicker than we can. So that's student learning. And Ms. Sheehan will do a instructional practice.
So we kind of morph together, because student learning can't happen without instructional practice, right? So instructional practice is part of a strategic plan, is to promote and sustain high-quality instruction that engages and challenges all students. So first of all, we need to have that safe learning environment in all of our schools. So our PBIS model has really been amazing for all of our schools. For the past seven years, we've implemented this. And, you know, at first, I was not sure if we could always be positive all the time and just, you know, create structures that would actually work. And they really do. They really and truly work. And it has been great model for us to now move that into the academics, because it's part of the multi-tiered system of support, the MTSS that I'll talk about as I go through this. So having that safe learning environment is so important with PBIS and the expected behaviors throughout the school, and then responsive classroom for building that classroom community within each classroom. In math, as Michelle had mentioned, we have the new Bridges Math Program, and teachers will be having some of that professional development on June 17th. on June seventeenth and eighteenth in the afternoon to prepare for next year. Um, manuals have come in this past week and our paraprofessionals are putting them together so that they will be in the hands of teachers and they can also access any online material as well right now, um, prior to, um, implementing this new program. And then in science, Lisa Ryan is working on that science curriculum, which will be K to four, which will be amazing for us to have blocks of time for science. Um, it has been interesting to watch how kids make their own science when they have a mask break. Um, we've had drawings of ant farms this past week because we have a lot of ants crawling around since the new building project started. So that's been kind of interesting outside, I'm saying, but they're outside watching the ants, which is fun. So they make their own way with science and it's fun. ELA is going to be big for us. So we are implementing this new, um, course for our teachers to take. But we also put in a structure for our teachers to be able to be supported with instructional coaches that will do job embedded professional development in all of the classrooms. So they will work with the teachers and students and they'll look at student work and be able to work at student work with the teachers and help them develop differentiated instruction for that tier one. That tier one is what all students get and then what else does other students need to support their learning? So that is one piece and then the second piece, we hired reading specialists for next year. And so those reading specialists will now work with tier two students and our paraprofessionals to help in target interventions, progress monitor, track, see if students are responding to that intervention. If they're not responding, then we need to know why and we need to look at that again. And then a third level of that is our, um, lead special education teachers. And that lead special education teacher will be looking at all of those interventions with the student support team, the instructional coach, the reading specialist, and a few teachers that are on the student success team. They will look and say, what's happening? Why isn't this working for this child? We've tried all of these interventions, you know, we've, we've looked at all of these assessments. Maybe a referral for special education testing is required at this time. Special education testing takes a huge amount of time in resources and in staffing to, um, it takes away instruction from kids to be able to test other kids. So we really want to do it right and we want to make sure that we get all of those things done. So this is a big system for us that we're all implementing next year, which we're very excited about. So the MTSS is our structure. We will have a win block, what I need, um, and students will have that time each day that will be dedicated to what they need. And it could be enrichment for some and it could be interventions that we know because of, based on assessment or even the teachers just working in small groups with children, they will know what the kids need. But we have the structure, we have the support and we have a system that's going to work, excuse me, which is very exciting. So, um, that is about all for instructional practice. If Marilyn wants to jump in.
They all move over?
I have the last two. I get to talk about communicating and money, the two of my favorite topics. So I feel that the pandemic has brought communication to an all-time high between emails from superintendent or emails from me or emails from the teachers. We're using ClassDojo now, which is, uh, at all three schools, which has been a wonderful tool because it translates to native languages, no matter what families speak, they'll be able to read it and respond back in their language and we get it in English. So it's been a wonderful tool, I think, a- all teachers just, they love it. We also have, to help our EL students, we've, as John, as Dr. Harrison had mentioned, that we have EL tutors. And they made sure when we hired our EL tutors that they were bilingual in Portuguese so that the nurse had somebody to come to the phone to talk to the parents i- in, in the case of a child being sick. I mean, that for me, I, I always had that, my EL teacher is bilingual, so I know the advantage of that. So I can only imagine that they must be breathing a sigh of relief being able to communicate with families that, that don't speak English. As far as outside relationships with, with, with people, I know that we've been so secluded that, you know, those connections that we made with, like, between, for me, for Spring Gate and being in their newsletter and, and going there, that's come to a halt, but we look forward to next year rekindling those relationships. You know, with, um, Mike's Pizza was great for giving us coupons for free pizzas to our, for our PBS, uh, PBIS, um, incentive. You know, those, recreating those and maybe increasing them to, to other vendors in, in the community, it would be wonderful. I know that, um, our after-school programs had, had reached out a lot too, so, so we're hoping that, all of that. You know, I, I was fortunate enough to, to attend a, a function this weekend where we were kind of mask-free and it, and it felt good and it felt like, you know, life was coming back. So I look forward to more of that. So that's our communication and relationships, which are only going to improve. And I, I don't think that the level of communication that we have now, that this pandemic has brought us, is going to decrease at all because I, I know that, you know, as a parent, parents want to hear what's going on in schools and, and I think, you know, open communication is, is the best, is the best thing. So I look forward to that going back to normal, but yet staying above what we had been doing. Resource allocation, you know, we're going to continue with our technology plan. We, as far as elementary schools or schools in general, um, using our resources, we can only use what Mrs. Hackett gives us. And, and she's done a great job allocating those resources in, into where they, they're, they, that she, it's decided that they're needed. This year, we've been fortunate because we, we've gotten some money through the federal government and, and, and you know that this pandemic has given us resources for a, a CNA, you know, that I don't think will continue, but we're using our resources. We bought a new math program that we're implementing this year. So I think Rockland Public Schools has done a great job with, with, um, deciding what has been needed and allocating the resources to, to help us with those, those areas. And kudos to Jane for using that pencil and she doesn't use the eraser much, so. And that what we don't have, we have wonderful PACs that work really hard to raise money and funds for the good things, the fun things, the, the T-shirts and the ice creams and, and all the things that, you know, school doesn't really pay for. I know just this year, we had some new children move in and we had a spirit week and we had Bulldog Day. And one of the, um, parents had called the office and said, my child doesn't have a bulldog shirt, where can I buy them? And that Thursday, the PAC had bought everybody a new bulldog shirt. So it's just little things like that, that, you know, make everybody happy and put a smile on families' faces, so that's all good stuff. So we're good, our intr- our, you know, our new school is being built. What I, what I need at Esten is, you know, a pothole filled here and there or, um, but, and everybody's always good. Mark Scham and his crew have done a really good job of keeping up the old building too, so we're doing okay.
Excellent, thank you. Questions or comments for my colleagues on the committee?
Uh, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about the Bridges Math because it sounds like the ELA stuff you're just building on foundations and the stuff that's already there, but you're talking about a whole new program for math. So can you tell us what's different compared to what you were using before and how this is going to benefit our kids?
So it's, it's, um, program-based, um, we, we did a ton of research. We put together a whole committee, actually pre-pandemic. And after reviewing many different, um, programs, Bridges Math, um, was the best to meet our needs. Real focus on problem-solving, um, group work, um, a spiraling curriculum so that kids, if they don't get it the first time, it's going to come back around again. It's a lot of change in teaching practice, um, which is going to require, um, us to provide teaching PD. So that's going to be, uh, happen at the end of this year, beginning of next year, and then, um, early releases will be focused on both reading and math, um, but.
A long time ago, we had the Envision, Envision Math Program and that was kind of dated. It didn't have any of the, the computer pieces, any of the, um, resources that are up to date. It was basically, a math program is aligned with the standards for each grade level. Sometime, the standards change or we, Michelle talked about the spiraling piece. We do that a lot in ELA, the program that we use in ELA, um, spiral so that if we're talking about inferencing in ELA, kids in first grade inference and they inference in fourth grade, but they, they do it deeper. And math will be the same way, you know, they'll talk about part-to-whole relationships in first grade and then they'll get to fractions in fourth grade. So it's that building of that, of that curriculum that really, um, we need something that, that is aligned with every grade level and, and builds on the concepts that are taught.
Right, and just, and just to show you how, how, um, deep it is, it requires, besides kindergarten seventy-five minutes, but K to four will be ninety minutes, I mean, ones through four will be ninety minutes of math. Uh, fifteen minutes of that is called a number corner, which is really working on number, um, skills and really working on, um, place value, all those things. So, um, it's a very comprehensive program.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, can you tell me, um, there's a lot more, it sounds like since the pandemic, a lot more use of, um, technology for the kids. Are we giving them opportunities to like acquire typing skills or have you noticed that they don't need it? Like how, you know, back when I was in school, I took a typing class in, in high school. Like how are our elementary school kids learning these skills?
I have to commend our STEAM teachers. They were so instrumental on all of the children K to four, learning the computer skills. They went into the classrooms, um, they, they knew that they had to get safely close to them to be able to show them how to touch which buttons. They couldn't just project it on the screen. So it really came from the STEAM teachers and the teachers reinforcing that, um, when the STEAM teachers weren't there. Uh, it's amazing, Dr. Cron has visited our schools and he has commented on, it's just amazing how well our students have adapted to technology and in the use of it. It's not overly used, um, it needs to be strategically, strategically used and productive, but it is incredible how many skills they have learned over this past year that we didn't prepare for, we just had to do.
It's funny because you talk about typing, you know, they basically teach what the home keys are. And then they're busy dragging and dropping, inserting pictures, going to Excel and how you would put in a, for, you know, for the older kids. It's not plain old typing anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's, here's the keys and this is all the other things you can do.
And it's a team of, of Lisa Ryan, Rachel Mack, and Debbie, Debbie Hogan that really put that together to really help our teachers with that.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I have a question regarding what they need, uh, the WIN program, can you explain that a little more?
Sure. So if we didn't designate a block of time, it, it wouldn't be part of the school schedule. So we have to have a designated block and so WIN is what I need so that it goes across every population of student, um, from EL to our advanced learners, to our EL advanced learners, to our special education students who need some support in a different area, maybe it's not always the reading that they have, it could be other things. So it's giving kids opportunities to have what they need, their needs being met. But it has to be part of the schedule so that it doesn't get pushed to the side or something takes over. It will be a daily thing that will happen.
That's great, and will social emotional health be a part of that option?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Quick, quick comment question for me. One thing I heard you mention a couple of times is about a safe learning environment. And I know that that's something that, um, all of us really strive to have even pre-pandemic. And I think we've historically done a really great job at that of not only having a safe, actually safe learning environment, but for kids a safe feeling environment, feeling safe at school. And this year's never been, obviously, more of a challenge to have a safe learning environment going through a pandemic, but it's pretty amazing how well everybody has done, uh, with the, really the real raw data of the low transmission of, um, COVID in our schools. But also I know how, at least I, speaking as a father, and my kids, how safe they felt going to school and how I felt of them going to school. So thank you for providing that in this past year and I know it'll be certainly even better in the years coming forward. One sort of question I had, and I know one other focus we always really try to, uh, hone in on is our gaps, right? Meaning gaps meaning kids that may not be served by our curriculum, uh, for one reason or another, better than another. And for this past year, um, I think there are more and more significant, more serious gaps just based upon the cards that we were dealt. And you talked a little bit about, um, paying sort of additional attention to that with more interventions and, um, uh, I think that's so important and I'm really glad that you're doing that. And what I'm really sort of worried about, and maybe this is speculation on my end, but I would speculate that given the challenges, particularly at the elementary age, that special education may be something that, um, is a greater need, um, going forward. And I'm wondering how we feel is how positioned we are to sort of catch kids up who maybe, um, were challenged more so in a year like this year than they are next year. You mentioned testing, um, you mentioned sort of maybe additional services that kids might need. How, uh, well-positioned do you feel we are and how clear is the picture of what that might look like sort of going forward?
It's a great question. So, um, all research is saying that we need to move forward. We can't, you know, if you're moving, advancing to third grade, you're not going to have second grade work. You are advancing to third grade, but we have to do that with caution of knowing what skills they are coming into that third grade classroom with. So having our instructional coaches to be able to work with our classroom teachers on that grade level appropriate curriculum, that's when they have to differentiate that tier one instruction. That's the instruction that all children will receive. So all children in that classroom will receive that instruction. And then within that tier one, that teacher still needs to differentiate for the students who need those skills that need to be brought forward. They may not need, you know, a half a year of it, it may just be that they need like three weeks of it. They caught up on that skill, it might be six weeks, but that will all be tracked and we'll see if they respond to that intervention. If they don't, they have that instructional coach that's helping them and supporting them. Part of the SST team and the multi-tiered system of support structure that we have with the reading specialist and the lead special education teacher in conjunction with the school psychologist. So it's a complete team looking at that whole child and seeing everything. And when I say the whole child, there's an other side to that, that we have weekly case conferences, which include our behavioralists, our adjustment counselors, our school psychologists, and special education support staff for any student that might have any social emotional needs. And teachers can bring those students forward and we have meetings and we discuss cases and then we, we, then the nurse is included in that as well. Um, and we, we look at students as individuals and what, what do they need? It could be part of that win block as well.
Thank you.
And then also using our paraprofessionals. I mean, they're, they're, they've been wonderful. I mean, at Esten, uh, they, they did online work with the kids. They, they do small groups, they do one-on-ones. They work with the teachers, the ELA leads or the reading specialist next year and they get activities that they do every day with those kids on the skills that they need and, and under the guidance of the teachers and the, the reading people and the ELA people. They've done a wonderful job to help our kids catch up.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Um, not for, um, our three principals here, but these strategic plans, um, are they online that the rest of our community could see them? There's a lot of great stuff, a lot of great goals that our families are aware of. I believe they are on the website, but I just wanted to.
They're all over the website and they're actually posted in every classroom throughout the district.
Excellent.
So, community watching. Go take a look at what is the great work. It's not just one bullet, it's pages of what we're going to do to support our students. So, um, you know, please be involved with those teachers, please be involved with the schools, um, to help everybody continue to grow, so.
In just a moment, we'll be voting on our, uh, two school improvement plans. But before we do, I just want to thank again Dr. Harrison for being here with us tonight and principals Smith, Shifely, and Sheehan, uh, for all the hard work that you all and everyone has put into these school improvement plans. They're always important, but maybe this year more than ever, and thank you for the very important work. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll be looking for a motion and an approval for the Rockland High School Improvement Plan first.
A motion?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroney.
And a second?
And we have a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, that is a vote. Now we'll be looking for a motion and a second for the Esten, Jefferson, and Memorial Park School Improvement Park Plans.
A motion?
Second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroney and a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that is a vote as well, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, we are quite blessed to have the Esten PAC with us, welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello there.
Hello. All right, so this year has been a very different year, as we all know. We weren't able to host a lot of our. We weren't able to host a lot of our social events and all the little fun things that we get to do. We didn't get to bring in our educational assemblies, but we found other ways to help support our teachers and our students, purchasing extra learning materials that they might need. We just purchased caterpillars for all our kindergarten, first grade classrooms. They're growing, watching them, life cycle. So we really tried to support in that way this year as well, more than any year. At the beginning of the year, we bought all the students, bus drivers, teachers, we bought them all bulldog face masks to start off the year. So everyone had one right off the bat. We got extra cleaning wipes, hand sanitizers to put on the classroom, just to give everybody a little kickstart to the year. We did get to hold a couple of fun events for our students. With the help of the faculty, we hosted a Halloween and Valentine's Day bingo. We did a Google Meet. Each teacher logged in. Mr. Gore pulled from the office and as they got their bingo, they came down to the office to get a prize. So it was a big hit. The kids really enjoyed it and it added a little fun to this crazy year. As Ms. Smith said, for Spirit Week, we got all the students and teachers bulldog shirts just because this year, more than anything, I think everyone needed that pick-me-up and we didn't want anyone feeling left out from Spirit Week. So that was the one day we knew might be a little hard for some. We were able to still sponsor four scholarships for graduating seniors this year. So we do that every year and this year we still made enough to be able to do that. We still have a lot of activities coming up at the end of the year with fourth grade activities, yearbooks, all that stuff. We have Brain Game coming, bringing a slush truck in for the last day of school, all that fun stuff. And this year, we were able to raise nineteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
Which is, yeah, it's still really, really good year. So thank you, parents, because we know parents are selling a lot of the calendars and tickets, but be real. So thank you, parents. And we just want to say thank you to the teachers and Ms. Smith for helping us this year and it was, was a good year.
Despite everything.
Despite everything. We're making it, right?
Positive attitude, positive outlook.
We're getting through.
Our PACs get us through so much. I don't know what we'd do every year without our PACs. It makes our school days more fun with bulldog shirts, activities. In any other year, it makes it awesome, but man, you guys just do awesome work.
We try.
Thank you.
Keep the fun in school still.
Exactly. Any other questions or comments?
Just thank you for what you do.
Thanks so much for being with us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. For all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda, item E, we have our last day of school for grades one through twelve, which is proposed to be Monday, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and it would be a half-day. Dr. Cron, do you have a recommendation in any way?
I recommend, that is exactly what I recommend.
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
We'll have a motion for nineteen days left of school.
And a second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Maroney and a second from Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. Thank you. Last up and quick question on this, Alan, before we go ahead and vote on it.
Yes. Half-day.
Should be a half-day, correct?
Should be a half-day, correct.
Okay. So what we're going to be voting on is a motion for a last day of school for kindergarten, which should be Wednesday, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That would be a half-day.
That's a motion?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroney and we have a second by Mrs. Davidson. Thank you. All those in favor?
You're so excited for the last day of school.
Exactly. Exactly. Next up on MG, we have FY twenty-two contract ratifications. Dr. Cron?
Thank you. I would like to ask that the school committee ratify the secretaries' contract tonight. They have voted to ratify. And so I'm asking that the school committee place their stamp of approval on this one-year contract with the secretaries.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cron, and thank you to the secretaries, all the secretaries we have for all the fine work that we do. And we'll be looking for a motion for ratification of the FY twenty-two secretary's contract.
That's a motion?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroney.
And a second?
And a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is a vote. Next up, Technology Services. Dr. Cron?
I'm going to say I have no idea why Technology Services is here. I think it could have been related to the cyberware, cyber situation that we're in, but I have nothing to report about Technology Services.
We do have technology and we do have services.
We do have services. We have plenty of technology.
And services.
And services.
Excellent.
And, but why it's on the agenda.
That is why, Dr. Cron, my apologies, it was on the agenda regarding the ransomware attack, but due to the ongoing criminal aspect of it, we've been advised not to discuss it publicly.
Sure.
My apologies.
No worries.
And the superintendent, that is why it was on the agenda.
Are there any questions or comments about technology or services?
We are thankful for them. No comment.
That being said, one of the final acts of tonight, as always, is our public service announcements. We'll start down the end with Mrs. Hennessy.
Sure. Just a couple of things. Two of them came out of the monthly reports and I didn't mention them or we didn't really talk about them, but for the community, there's a billboard by the Hanover Mall that was designed by our advanced art students that talk and promote not drinking and driving and being responsible and all of that good stuff. So I just wanted to point out that we have such wonderful talent in our high school. So thank you for those students for submitting and winning. And then in one of the technologies, I've seen it, I use the RPS app on my phone. We check lunch menus and all the good stuff that's out there. So I know there was a second iteration that was launched, so it is a little different, but just reminding people that that app is available. I know a lot of Facebook questions come out, like when's last day of school and when's this and when's that? So the app is a really great tool. Just go to the App Store and download it. It's free. And I think the only other thing is for class of two thousand twenty-one, it's a great couple of weeks coming up. I wanted to say congratulations, enjoy your last day of school on Wednesday, enjoy prom and we'll see you at graduation. So a lot of exciting stuff going on. So that's it. Thank you. Oh, and happy Memorial Day weekend. Enjoy the long weekend.
Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy.
Most I spoke tonight. I was going to throw you off in motion so that you'd have to call on me instead of Jill. All good. Thank you.
Mrs. Maroney?
I just have an update from Nicole Sedron. She was our Project Three Fifty-One student that was here two weeks ago. She collected more than seventy bags by more than thirty people that donated and I just wanted to thank her for all of her hard work and thank all of the people that helped support her in her Cradles to Crayons clothing drive. I thought that was excellent update, seventy bags of things.
Outstanding job. Hard work by Mrs. Sedroni. Absolutely. Mrs. Davidson?
I would just also like to point out that the Rockland Education Foundation donated a sixty-five inch interactive TV screen to the library and I'm looking forward to seeing that. Also, going off of Jamie, I did see the billboard down at Hanover and it looks great. She stole my thunder on that one. And then also enjoy every moment, class of two thousand twenty-one. It's going to be a great week of weather, so enjoy it and be safe. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Dr. Small?
So as a pediatrician, we often refer to this time of year as the colds go out and we start seeing the traumas. So just a, a couple of words of caution. So the weather is great. I hope everybody's getting outside, enjoying the good weather, getting physical activity. Remember your helmets. So if you're on a bike, on a skateboard, whatever you're doing, please make sure you wear your helmets. Water safety is really important, so making sure that kids aren't swimming unsupervised, that if there's a pool, young kids are kept, you know, behind a gate. There's always an adult whose job is to watch them, not just that there are adults around. And heat-related injuries, so wearing your sunblock. I'm not a good example of that today, but wearing your sunblock and staying hydrated. So with the good weather, hoping everybody enjoys it, gets physical, but make sure that they do it in a safe way. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Small. Just a couple of things for me. With all of our wonderful end-of-the-year events coming up, I just want to encourage all participants to participate safely and responsibly. I know there's not a lot of them out there watching our meeting right now, but boy, I pray that our students are going to be just as safe as they possibly can for this prom and graduation season. I think it's only natural for all of us that we've been through this difficult year, staying home and not being together and not celebrating together, that as restrictions lift and we have occasion to celebrate each other and our achievements, that we want to do so and do so with a lot of fun and exuberance. But I just really hope that we do it responsibly and safely. We want to make sure that we see everybody grow up and their dreams come true with all the awesome stuff that they have going for them.